So Mayor, Council, what I wanted to do today was to bring you to a spot in Old Town that I think is so special. This was the Feed House, where it was the history of Lewisville, the oldest structure in Lewisville, and now look at what it has become. Feed Mill, not Feed House. The Feed Mill. And so I thought it would be good, since we are local, that we have a couple hours here, and this is a great place. And so we're going to first focus, James is going to focus on the rodeo arena. We have some updates and some direction that we're going to need. Claire is going to move forward in relation to a presentation called Peter Kayama, some potential new steps for council direction. And finally, Richard is going to talk some of that's in here at Old Town. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Parker.
Thank you. And I'm Mayor, Council. In the back, can you hear me at this level? Is this okay? All right. I don't want to talk all the way to the street. So we're going to talk a little bit about the Lewisville Rodeo Arena and the Labor Day Rodeo. This is an update on a presentation that you received back in the summer of 2018. And some of the information actually is similar, but we're trying to update you from that point to where we are today. I gave you a handout a little when to go. We'll talk about that later in the presentation. So we'll start off just, these are the current issues, and a lot of these we talked about back in August, actually it was before August, it was in June, when we talked about repairs that were needed at the rodeo arena. And at that time, this was after the 2016 rodeo, we saw there were a lot of issues at the arena, and a lot of repairs were approved for 2017. Lewisville Saddle Club did those repairs at their cost, because they at that time owned all the fixtures and the dirt, and they were in charge of opening that facility. They completed enough that the 2017 rodeo event was held as scheduled. They came to us in January 2018, and they said that the rest of the list of repairs that needed to be done, they could not afford. And those repairs were not going to be able to be done, they asked for our assistance. We told them at that time that since they owned the fixtures and the dirt and the fencing and the announcing stand and the concession stand and all of that, we could not go in there and fix those things. They had to do them, but after discussions, it was agreed that they could donate those to the city if the council agreed, and then we would be responsible for them going forward, but we also would own that property. So they made that request in January of 2018. City Council last summer approved that. That was, this one right here is actually in June. That city council said, go ahead and move forwards with what has to be done to hold the rodeo. And the direction we got was that we want to continue that tradition in Old Town, but after the repairs were done to get it functional and safe, let's regroup and see long-term what we need to do with that facility. We'd identified some needs, but let's get some professionals in here as well in the field of rodeo that we'll look at. Now, the good news is, coming out of that meeting, when we told you there's $835,000 worth of repairs, and about half of those were immediate urgent needs, public services and parks were able to do a lot of that work in-house. And so they came in and they did about $100,000, including some staff time, about $100,000 investment. They were able to replace the dirt, to repair and upgrade and paint the arena fence, do some of the electrical work, take out some of the old wiring, do some fixes on that, make some adjustments to the lights, and the event was able to be held in September of 2018, August, September 2018, as planned. That did not address all of the repairs that we know would need to be done, but this was a significant savings that was done largely because of public services and parks, and a lot of parks who had done that out of public services, and really did a fabulous job. So in January 2019, this is all new to you probably, in January 2019, Saddle Club came to us again and said that their membership was down to the point, and their finances were down to the point, that they did not feel like they were going to be able to continue operating the rodeo, and they might even need to disband as a club. And they asked if that were to happen, would the city take over operation of Labor Day Rodeo? Now, at this point, we acted on the assumption that because council wanted the rodeo to continue, we were told 20, 30 more years of rodeo, that we should at least be open to that possibility. So we received the request from them on January 18th, a letter from the Board of Directors saying they were going to stop running the Labor Day Rodeo, and they asked the city to take over responsibility for it. So at that point, we put together a team to look at what we could do there. We realized, first off, nobody on city staff is a rodeo professional. We have never run a rodeo. We've never, well, some individual employees have participated in rodeos. Clearly, I have not, although in my defense, Hawaii is western here, so this is western attire in my view. This will be clear. So we knew we were going to have to bring in some help, so we brought in two different professional rodeo consultants, and had them walk in and walk around the site with staff, make, identify possible facility upgrades, repairs, changes, talk about the viability of the site, the viability of the event. Is there a future for the event, and if so, what would need to be done? Both of them were very optimistic. Both of them said absolutely, this is a good venue for the event. In fact, we had been told a number of times in the past that our arena was really too small, that it was too narrow for barrel racing, no, too narrow for bull riding and too short for barrel racing. Both of these people came in there and said, oh, no, this facility is a great size. If anything, it's bigger than most of what we work with. The Nationals in Las Vegas are held in an arena about half that size. Okay, well, that's good to know. So now we know for sure that this arena is viable. They both also did say that having a rodeo in Lewisville, there's a market for it. They both did, by the way, both of them have some involvement with the Lewisville Rodeo. One of them had rode in it years ago, one of them was the announcer several times. So they knew the facility, they knew the area even before we called them. Both of them said that if we start making those repairs and upgrades now and start planning the event now, they both said by the fall, we can have a rodeo. And they said it can be better and bigger than it has been in the past. So timeline, we're in good shape, pending direction from council today, we're in good shape to make that happen, if that's indeed what we believe is the best course. Both of them also said that one problem we had in the past rodeos is we've noticed the number of competitors has reduced. And part of that is competition. On Labor Day weekend, there's considerable competition. There's three or four other rodeos in the North Texas Oklahoma market that compete, plus the Saddle Club worked through a, I would call a minor league rodeo. Frankly, one of the consultants was maybe less enthusiastic about calling it even minor league. He said it's just a very low-level amateur rodeo. Out in West Texas, they do great. In this market, they don't draw many competitors. Both of them said if you were to tie in with a more established rodeo group, one of them does a lot of PBR, pro bull riding, he said one of those coming in would immediately boost your quality of the event and your attendance and your marketing. And both of them said that not only could this event be supported, but they could see three or four rodeo events a year at this facility through the professional circuits. That doesn't count the high school rodeo we talked to you before, but the local high school has a Lewisville High School rodeo, but it's held way off on the other side of Fort Worth, because they didn't have access to our venue. So it's viable. For any of these professionals, it is viable. Now, after that, we went and met with the Lewisville 2025 Steering Committee. I believe at least one of those, no, two of those members are here today. And we showed them all this information, and we said, what do you think? And they came back and pretty enthusiastically said, yes, we think you need to continue this tradition. Yes, you need to invest in the facility. They also talked about uses for the park side, the west side of that property. If you'll picture the property in your head, the arena is on the east end over by Keely. As you move toward Mill Street along Parkway, it becomes much more of a passive park setting. They very much like the idea of passive park uses, low-intensity athletic fields, but walking, picnicking, just activities for families. So they liked the idea of that, and they supported it. I'll tell you, that one member at the start, his first question was, why are we even doing this? And by the end of the meeting, he was the one who made the motion to say, yes, let's continue. He was persuaded by what he saw when he heard. We did have members of the public come to that meeting to speak in favor. So the consultant recommendations, we put them all in one list. Some of these came from both, some came from just one. Now, first off, there need to be some physical changes to the arena. We're going to go ahead and make repairs anyway, let's do it right, basically. For example, right now, the bucking chutes, all six bucking chutes are in one row, the bucking chutes directly across from the stands, and they're a little bit off-center. They're a little bit to the east of center. And both consultants said, it's okay being in the center of the arena facing the stands. A lot of places you'll see them on the end. Both of them said the way the stands line up, and they love the stands, they said it's fine, but split them into groups of three, three here, three there, with a return chute in the middle. Because the professional bulls are trained, when they throw that rider off, they head for that chute in the middle of the bucking chutes. And if there's not an exit there, then they wander around trying to find an exit. And then when you do this, shift a little bit to the west so that it is centered on those stands, so that it's not off-center. They talked about an announcing stand. One of them said, you probably don't need one at all. The other one said, it's better if you do have one, doesn't have to be nearly that tall. He said the floor can be about the height of the fence. Both of them said if you have one, move it over to the northwest corner, which if, if you're sitting at the stand, look at the announcing stand now, that's on the far back left corner. Both of them said put it there. The announcers prefer to be able to see when the animals come out of the chute, not have to rely on someone to tell them. So they recommended if we do an announcing stand, we put it over there, make it lower. Don't need it to be as tall as the current one is. They talked about the roping chute, which is where for team roping and calf roping, right now, it is on the east end of the arena, right by some stands, but there's no back area. So the competitors, when they're waiting for their turn, they're actually in the arena floor directly in front of the eastern stands. So people in the eastern stands have no view of the event whatsoever. Both of them said move it to the west end, which is where right now the barrel racers come in and out, and put it there, and there's plenty of space to have it where the cowboys, cowgirls are waiting off the arena floor, and put it on that other end. And then, of course, they talked about the backstage pins and fencing, we already knew that was going to be addressed. Both of them said that you could do permanent, but you, we probably should strongly consider going to companies that bring in and set up temporary. There's two companies, primarily, there's a lot, but there's two big ones. And both of them go to rodeos and set up all the backstage area, and then when the event's done, they take them out. And both of them said that might be a more viable possibility we should at least should look at, but they were unanimous in saying we need to redo that back there. So those are physical. And they talked about the arena fence right now is five feet. Now, that's the one that you might remember the horse went through, because it had an upper rail, had a bottom rail, and the middle was just, I know it's not chicken wire, what do they call it?
No climb wire.
No climb wire. So fancy chicken wire. And the horse couldn't see it, went right through it. So we added a middle bar, which prevents that, and we painted it, but it is five feet high. One consultant said five feet's probably fine. The other one said, I don't know how they got insurance at five feet, the standard is six. You need to be six feet. So out of safety concerns and insurance concerns, we believe you're going to go to six feet all the way around. The light towers are old light fixtures, like we knew they had to be replaced. They recommended if you're going to do that, move the poles behind the bleachers and set them in front of the bleachers, because they obscure the line of sight. Plus, they're shooting at the houses across the street. Put them behind the bleachers facing the arena, it takes the light off the houses and it clears the light aside. They said, one of them in particular said, if you want to bring in a PBR, you need to have some kind of sponsor seating. If you were here the past few years, the sponsor seating was folding chairs up against the rail on the south side of the arena. Some years they were marked off, some years they weren't. They were just folding chairs. So you're getting a lesser view, you're getting dust and dirt in your face, and you're paying more for those seats, not the VIP experience that a PBR event expects. So they said, if you want to have those, you should consider some way to accommodate sponsors, some kind of elevated seating, doesn't have to be air-conditioned luxury boxes, but some kind of improved seating for your VIPs and sponsors. Both of them very quickly looked around and said, where are your bathrooms? And we said, well, you see that portable over there, we have about 13 more of them and we need them. And they said, oh. When people buy tickets for a rodeo, some of the cowboys might be okay with it, most of your customers, they just bought a ticket, they don't want to go into a portable. They said permanent restrooms are the ideal, but the air-conditioned restroom trailers will work really well if people would use them. And they said bring those in, and if you need someone with portables, do that, but try to get away from using just portable bathrooms. The onsite parking was an issue that both of them pointed out, that it can be a challenge. We know that's a challenge, because the capacity is limited, especially when you bring in, back in the old days, people would bring in their horse trailer, and it was about the size of just a, you know, small flatbed trailer. Now they bring in these six and eight compartment air-conditioned horse trailers to take up about six parts of space worth of wood, and they need space. We don't really have a lot of space onsite. So both of them looked around and said that the participants would probably be fine offloading and then parking somewhere fairly nearby, but not onsite. So we could do some kind of a parking arrangement with some of the adjacent commercial properties. Fans, they said fans prefer to park onsite, but a lot of events shuttle people in, you could have VIP parking onsite and shuttle in the rest. But they both said you've got to have a plan for parking right now. Honestly, we've not addressed that. Next one down here, the second consultant came in, he's been an announcer for a lot of these, and he said the stock handler, the announcer, a lot of times the clown, the event secretary, they will usually stay onsite throughout the event. They won't stay in a hotel or a friend's house or go camping in the park. They will stay onsite, they have an RV they bring in. They said it'd be great to have at least power and water hookups for six to 10 RVs that would cover that need. Wastewater, not a need, power and water would be the only hookups needed. Ron Carson looked at what we had on the ground and said that'd be pretty easy to do. We have power and water onsite. Both of them said, yes, use an outside promoter, if you don't have that expertise, which we don't, and preferably one that has a connection with professional circuits and stock handlers. And they both made the comment, people come there to see, they want the cowboys to do well, but they really love it when the cowboy gets thrown along business, and so you want good stock. Both of them suggested ancillary events, have children's, you know, blow-ups or mechanicals, have vendors, have concerts before or after. We mentioned that there was the original intent this year to move the parade to the rodeo weekend, which we've now set aside for a year because of the pop festival. We mentioned that, and they both said, oh, yeah, parades are great, get lots of horses, get some cattle in there, people show up. So they said ancillary activities, these days, the rodeo by itself will draw a core crowd, but if you want to get a broader audience, especially a regional audience, you ought to have more to do. And then both of them said you need to seriously consider getting off of Labor Day weekend. In fact, the second one to come in, as he walked in the arena, the first thing he said was, he said, I know you've always had this on Labor Day, but are you really stuck on that day if you open to a change? They both said there's a lot of competition on Labor Day. They said fall is fine, spring can work, summer not great, but try to schedule it in a time where there's not a lot of competition. They said avoid like. We asked about doing it here on Labor Day weekend, they said no, the festivals, especially the concerts, that they, both of them said they've done rodeos that are up against a concert, the concert wins, it just draws a bigger crowd, so try to avoid that. Of course, this year, if we're on Labor Day weekend, we'll have that ourselves from the pop festival. We asked about the weekend before Labor Day, Western Days, thinking we could have a Western week, but there's two very large rodeos that weekend in Texas, Abilene is one and over the other, I've written it down. Both of them said, no, there's so much competition already that weekend, that's bad. Second weekend September actually could work. And then there's other times, we didn't talk specific dates, we just talked that window. But they both said Labor Day weekend is really just not a good time to do a rodeo event in this market. So any questions at this point before I move on to the next slide?
Talk about parking and transportation, have we thought about, like maybe using a DCTA lot?
So Councilman Jones' question was, we talked about parking and transit, have we thought about the DCTA lot? The answer is yes. And on a Saturday, we could do it. On a Friday, they're reluctant, because the trains are written in commuters on Friday afternoon, and we would overlap their events. Saturday, we could, Sunday, we definitely could, maybe not Friday, but we haven't looked at it. We identified, when we did the Fiesta Chara in May of 2018, we did all the parking, it was at City Hall, and we shuttled everybody. And that worked pretty well. Rodeo, we already, we know that most people park in the grass, we put up signage and try to keep people out of that neighborhood, and some people sneak in and park in that neighborhood, so it'd be educating the crowd. DCTA is an option, I think there's others that we can identify as well. Okay. So here's some scheduling considerations. Again, talking about Labor Day weekend, there are several other larger rodeo events that weekend, including the Texas State Fair in 2018 brought back their Texas State Fair rodeo, and it is on Labor Day weekend. So those are direct competitors to ours, which might have caused the crowd and competitor list to be smaller than it happened in past years. In fact, one of the two consultants we talked to ran the State Fair rodeo, so I kind of kicked him a little bit, but not hard, because he was, he looked like a tough guy. They said that it'll be very hard to find a professional rodeo promoter in this area who's not already committed to Labor Day weekend. Both of them are. They also said it's going to be hard to find large sponsors. One of them started listing off two or three sponsors, you know, like you definitely get, but not on Labor Day. And then all the circuits already have activities, so both participate, participate field, and they expressed concern that Labor Day weekend is a travel weekend for a lot of families, so it might be hurting their attendance there. So those are their reasons that they gave for not wanting to do it. Now, we specifically have some additional that staff developed. One is the pop festival concert out at the Lake Park Driving Range. That is going to take a tremendous amount of work from parks, public services, fire, police, special events, probably others I'm not even thinking to name right now. It's going to be hell of a special to be out there checking with the vendors. Having two events on the same day, same weekend, two different sites, especially multi-day events, honestly, we're not sure staffing will keep up with that. We'll do what we're told to do, but we're very concerned about the pressure that are put on staff and overtime costs, especially in uniform services. The Main Street Corridor project will be at or near completion by then. So we don't see it being a major issue, but if there is construction going on or it gets delayed a little bit, that could cause some congestion, that's probably true the whole month of September, knowing that the objective is to be done with Main Street before Western Days. So we put it in there just so you're aware, that's a possibility. And then finally, if we do these upgrades and repairs to the arena, we think, and those two consultants think it can be done in time for September of 2019, but as we know, if we get a rainy summer, everything is delayed. It took, I don't know, Stacy, how long does it take to finally drill Pierce over at Thrive?
Well, we're not done yet.
So rainy, rainy seasons can throw you off, and last summer was a rainy summer. Another rainy summer, we would not be ready, we would not be ready for the 2019. And frankly, we feel as if we rushed a little bit on the 2018 repairs. Everything was done safely, everything that had to be done was done. We would have tried to do a little bit more if we had more time to work with. So 19 is a possibility, but it's really, really tight.
Okay. Yes?
Let me sort of go back three slides.
Yes.
One, two. No, you don't have to go back, I'm just going to, our comment, so you made a comment earlier, we know nothing about running a rodeo, and we don't, we don't know about this. So my first thought was, yes, hire a professional. So then we see a slide that, you know, is telling us, here's what the professionals are telling us we need to do, and I'm like, yes, hire a professional. Then we finally come to this slide, and it says, you know, we don't recommend you do it on Labor Day, and I'm like, yes, hire a professional, which means I'm going to do it on Labor Day. And I think for anybody who says, oh gee, it's a tradition, you go, yeah, it was a tradition with the rodeo club, we realized that they disbanded and said, here, you have the arena, have fun. And so we hired a professional.
If you go back in time, Council, that, you know, Western, Western, Western Days should be Western week, and it was all that week of Memorial, Labor Day weekend, and of course, school started after that. So you look at that, so when we split that to go later in September for cooler weather, that was already breaking that tradition. Both consultants run rodeos, one in particular, y'all remember, some of y'all remember the Allen Event Center. He brought the top 50 bull riders and professional ropers, team ropers, saddle, bear brat, two Allen Events Center the last two years. They take out the ice, they bring in the dirt, all of the stuff, they put up about 4,100 seats, is the way it's arranged. One of them did the American Airlines Center, they're both involved in regional and nationwide PBR events, so these are the type of people that do it. They also are the type of people that design. So it was a very good plus and minus discussions onsite. So I think these two consultants were very valid in what they were telling us. We heard a lot of good things, there were some things we need to consider. So yes, both were talking about getting away from Labor Day weekend.
I think it's, you know, it's a tradition.
And that leads very nicely into the next item I have, which is not on the slide, we just got, this is the handout that I passed out to you. We had heard from Council, we had heard from the 2025 Committee, we heard from staff, we heard from two consultants, we wanted to give the public the chance to tell us what they thought. For example, Woodland off of Labor Day Rodeo just ruined the whole thing for everybody. And so we did a flash survey, it was out there for a little more than a week, and we had pretty good response, we had almost 400 responses in less than a week. And I'm not going to read through the whole thing, obviously. I have that one, and then I can email to anybody. Do you have enough now?
I think so.
I thought I made extras, but apparently that don't count well. I got one laugh. It was really funny, though. What I want to point out about this survey, before we talk about the results, is the first question asked about how likely you would be to go or not go if the city ran the rodeo. Need one more? I guess we'll use that one right there. No shadows up this year. So we asked, the first question was how likely or not likely would you be to attend if the city took over? And what you'll notice in there on the top of page one is about two-thirds or about 70% of the people said likely or very likely. But if you do that math, that means we should have about 70,000 people for rodeo, and the answer, we had about 4,000 people. So either people are fibbing, which we don't think, or people with an interest in rodeo, pro or con, were much more likely to respond. And that's what opt-in surveys do, we already know that to be true. So as we look at this, understand it's not scientifically valid for the whole community, but it probably is pretty reflective of the community portion that cares about. The vast majority of people probably don't have an opinion, the ones who do probably fairly reflect it. Even with that, you've got a two to one ratio. What I want to point out specifically is in the middle of page two, where we have three key findings, I'm going off memory here because my sheet's gone. We have three key findings. The first one is that there is overall public support for maintaining a rodeo in Lewisville. It's about a two to one ratio among people who care about it. Among the general public, we don't know, but people who care enough to answer, a two to one ratio of support. And some of that support, a lot of it was because of tradition, but an awful lot of it was just saying, we'd like to have events for our families to go to, make this a fun event. So the support was on that end as opposed to the other. The second thing we saw was that there was a lot of support for adding kids activities, entertainment, the bands. People who said, I've never gone to the rodeo, but if you do this, I would go. Tells us that if we continue with this process, we need to be looking at some of those add-ons, understanding that add-ons means added cost. So there's a budget impact if we bring in a band, and even if we run a flatbed truck in there and plug it into a generator on the van, there's a cost. If we bring in vendors, we bring in kid stuff, those are costs. And then the third item that I want to point out to you is that most of the opposition was focused on two main areas. One of them is animal welfare concerns, and the other is they don't want to use public funds on this event. So if we move forward with this event, and with the investment in the arena, we need to be able to address those two concerns in some way. Won't make everybody happy, but ignoring them would be a bad idea, just because of the number of responses and how that reflects to the public. And we had some ideas generated how we can do that. Part of that is a very transparent process on the spending. Part of it is making sure that when we spend money, it's not just for a one-time rodeo, that the arena can accommodate a lot of other uses, as we've talked to you about previously. And then on the animal welfare, we think there might be ways to incorporate some animal welfare considerations into the pre-event portions of the day. Very consensual right now. But I wouldn't want to ignore those two concerns, because the people who felt them, felt them very, very strongly. That is my prepared content, but we have one more slide. These are our decision points. So the first thing we want to know is, should we continue pushing to try and get the arena ready for a 2019 event, or considering the timeline, considering the pop festival that's on the calendar, should we instead not push for a September event, but look at the 2020 calendar, spring or fall, and work with a consultant to find a date that works? So those are two options we have. You want to go question by question?
Yes.
Okay, well, so that's our first question. 19 or 20?
20.
20.
20.
Oh, wait, 21, 21.
All right, a lot of 20s. I'm fine either way. Okay? So I didn't hear anybody saying, oh my gosh, you have to do it in 19 or else.
And I think, I think one thing implies the 20 is that we put so much into the 50 days.[1736.87]
Pop festival, yeah. I will say, if we do postpone the 20, we also will make sure the public knows that we're doing a lot of work on the arenas, just to avoid the risk of. Is that enough direction on that question?
I think, Council, really, if we say that we're just really delaying the rodeo, so that's a lot easier to swallow than.
Yeah, if we're going to a spring.
Right.
Okay. So I'm hearing it consists as that we're okay delaying the 2020 to avoid all those conflicts.
Can I say something? So another thing to remind, to remember, that in July of last year, the saddle club was still intact, and we did not know that, so now this is a change, so therefore, makes sense that the 20 is a good way to.
Do it right.
Yes.
Next question, I think there was a discussion about already, but should we move off Labor Day weekend, and if so, is there another preference for timing?
Like it should, and that's what the professionals are saying. If I compete, if I compete with a market that we're already behind in, we can enhance people who love to see the rodeo by making another weekend, you know, we can actually advertise doing that weekend up in North Texas State Fair, like coming to whatever week we have, and they'll probably help us with this.
I think too, if we go off the Labor Day weekend, and it may make sense anyway, and I'm not sure what the promoter said, but the Friday, Saturday, Sunday bit, if you're not doing Labor Day weekend, maybe Friday, Saturday, and if you do a Sunday, I don't think you can do a Sunday night if it's not a holiday weekend, but my guess is they probably said two days anyway.
Actually, they suggested Thursday, Friday, Saturday, with Thursday being a free event where they do a lot of the preliminary stuff, and then Friday, Saturday are paid. They said Sunday is just a bad attendance day all the way around.
Yeah, listen to the professionals.
Bob beat me to it. I have a professional.
Listen to a professional.
And, you know, I'd much rather have staff tell me, you know, where this best fits in our calendar as well. I mean, there's, there's the professionals in, and there's what we have for our events calendar as well. The professionals come back and stop on one of our existing events, absolutely. And that's a whole different conversation.
I'll tell you, almost certainly won't be an April recommendation, April is a work month.
James, I mean, I know we're not doing a Western Week, or the weekend before, kind of tie-in, I mean.
We asked about the weekend, so the question was, look at the weekend before, so we can tie in the Western Days, and we asked about that, and there's, I think Henrietta has a rodeo that's big, and then it's, Abilene has a big rodeo, and there's a third one, and so that weekend, the recommendation was not to pick that weekend. We would talk, we would talk to the consultant and see what they suggest, we'd make sure they know our, our calendar ahead of time. Here's the next one, is talking about money, if we're going to add ancillary activities, there's a cost for that, if we're going to bring in a consultant, there's a cost for that. One of the consultants in particular, a gentleman who's done the rodeo in Allen, he said he went into it knowing he would lose money in the first two years, and start making money the third year, and he lost the first two years with his truck. So knowing that while you build an audience, it's not going to be a huge money generator for revenue, how much is Council prepared to spend? We still have that out there, I think it's about 700,000 or so of repairs that have not been done, that might be affected by what we've done. But there's also the rodeo event itself.
Now, all the event, wouldn't that come out of the hotel occupancy tax?
It probably would. Right now, to give you an idea.
So the repairs in our general fund?
Yes, that's correct, I believe so. So Color Palooza is about a $55,000 to $60,000 event. Hall Bay at the Hall, it's about 35, Western Days is way, way up there, 700,000, right? So that kind of gives you an idea of comparable events. The one we're about to do, the same factor that I'm going to do next month, that is a 27, 28,000 property.
We're going to get money in pot, and I guess more hotels coming along, and so there's going to be more money in pot, so.
Wasn't that your question? Just because you have a lot of, and this is where we have.
Sure, right.
And could we set up some? Same thing, same. We don't think we have a percentage. You know me, I'm a professional.
Well, and you may, you may depress rates based on competition.
An alternative here is, you get staff to work with a consultant on a budget, or maybe a couple of different options, and bring those back.
That's what I was going to ask, yeah. What do, what do professionals say?
So.
I didn't go to the ballpark.
This is kind of the low range, mid-range, high range. You can see what you're going to do.
Probably triple A's.
If you're Roddy, if you're Roddins up there.
Okay? Any, any else on this one? Is that enough direction for us to move on again? And the last one, this is again, 2025 Committee talked about the west end of that property, the idea of doing some kind of park uses down there, passive park uses. The small area plan for Old Town North also addressed that, talked about a green belt, green belt trail along the creek and doing some kind of passive uses. So while this is not directly associated with the rodeo, it obviously would impact it. So the last question here is, what passive park uses in the western end of the property would be compatible with this event and this activity? Would not quit. Okay, I'm debating with soup, I can't eat soup.
Well, no, I think I, I think I need you, I think I need staff to come back and go, here's what we think is compatible, here's, here's the menu, what you like, I don't know.
It'd be a good neighborhood park, if this. It'd be a good neighborhood park. I'd be interested to see, could it be a trip next year, but I don't know, but that would be my thought, but I, I, you know, I'd probably need options that you guys can make up.
It's that compatible thing.
Well, the theme could lend itself to, I mean, Western theme, park benches, you've got to have the Wells Fargo deal, the kids can climb on, and the horses and all that and everything, I mean, I, they may not be safe anymore, but we used to play on those things all the time as kids, where there were horses and the stagecoach behind it, you could keep a theme like that that would be a lot of fun.
A bit of history is that, recall that Western Side had a tennis court, there was at one time a basketball court there, there was a backstop that, that was kind of in the northwest corner up against Mill Street. There was no fence back in the 70s or 80s, it actually went back to the 60s when the J.C.'s owned some of this. When we replatted, of course, we, we got it all, but discussions at 2025, staff and whatnot was more of a passive park, perhaps that type of fence comes down, you could do split rail with openings, you could have picnic tables, you could have an area, of course, for a consti, like the smaller area that's already there for, have had for events or a gathering, you could have, instructionally, you could have a small pollinator area, things like that, that invite people of that area to come in there. Again, you want to avoid where you're necessitating more parking for that, so that's what 2025 discussed, Stacy?
Yeah, so we, I think we discussed making events, this is a great place to not put a whole bunch of infrastructure to allow it to be organic, as we move through time and different events come in, that we can kind of see it as a place for, you know, just generically, make, make sure we have wide open spaces, families can use it, we can do some tactical urbanism there, where we come in, we set up, you know, a temporary playground, let kids play with, with it for a while, move it out, do some log, log, corn and all, some, some areas that are just general open space. I think one of the things that we get tied up on is that we need to dictate how people will use this space for the next 10, 15 years, and if we do some minimal improvements in terms of access and places for people to gather, that it will last, and we don't have to keep having this conversation over and over again for organic, in there. I mean, there, there used to be a nice, like, a game, you know, they play, an old-time baseball game there, and you don't need a fence line and structure for that, you just kind of need an open space that people can go to, and if we over-design it, it will become a place that we need parking for.
People, the, the trees down there are really kind of historic, I'll say that, there's board arc, there's pecan, and there's post oak, and back in the time, people would just take a blanket, and it was common to see people just put a blanket in a picnic basket, and just using the land as it was, and of course, things changed, but then people started abusing that, because there wasn't attention down there to maintenance, but I think that's changed, I think that would not be an issue anymore, so.
The very funny thing about it is that you already have the tree canopy, it has built-in shade, so whatever we do, we need to protect the root systems of the trees, make sure that, you know, protect that natural shade that makes it such an appealing place to go back out at.
But I think the key here is compatible, right? Because car lot, we might do that space, do something that might impact it with riding.
That's why I said I'd like to hear back from the staff, is it's the word compatible, that's what, when, when we're in rodeo mode, now what is it? Because it may not be what it is when we're not in rodeo mode, and that's the question.
I think it may, recent reference to this poor point on there, was just to introduce the thought that whatever we do on that end shouldn't negatively impact the other, or vice versa, or, or may enhance the other.
One thing, one thing to keep in mind too, Council, is you've got Legacy Point right across Keely to the south and east of this site, and a lot of other single family that are coming into that neighborhood, now that's, that's good and bad, because a lot of the existing neighbors are used to a couple of events a year, so we have to keep that in mind, but with the new lighting and some of the other things, the impact may not be that big to those events, but you would have more heads and beds in that area that would need a green space to walk to, and that would accommodate that very nicely.
So unless there's other comments or questions, I think that's the end of this one.